Meeting of the City of Waynesboro Planning Commission for, it's a regular meeting for Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021. Since we're actually here and we can actually say the pledge with a flag.
Let's do it.
Steve, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Steve. Can we, has everyone had a chance to review tonight's agenda? Commissioners? Can somebody make a motion for me to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Could I call for a second?
I'll second that.
Everyone in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? Motion carries. And has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the meeting held May 28th, 2021?
Yes.
Yes.
Any comments or anything? Someone want to make a motion to approve those minutes from the meeting held May 20, 28th, 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Could I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Severs. And everyone in favor of approving the minutes from the meeting held May 28th, 2021?
Aye.
Everyone not in favor? Motion carries. So we have a public comment period for items not on the agenda? Don't think the public's really here with us today?
Well, actually, we have a few people.
Is there, is there some people who would like to approach the podium? And when you do, if you could give your name and your address, that'd be great.
Hi, I am Cheryl Perry. I live in, on 1329th Main Street. And I had just come with some concerns about on the east side part of Waynesboro.
Okay. You could just go ahead and share your concerns.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Now's the time.
Oh, okay. Well, well, I've been gone for thirty-some years and I've moved back home. And I've just been disappointed that I haven't seen much change on east side, but I've seen a lot of change on the west side of town. I've lived in Fairfax, so I'm a retired school teacher. What I've noticed when I was living on east side as a child, we never had any sidewalks. And I still see that that's the same thing now. And I'm just a little disappointed in that. And also coming into town, there's just a little sign that says Waynesboro City Limits. And I was just wondering, well, can't we beautify the east side of town? Like, I know the west side down on Ross or you have all the restaurants and everything. And I'm not sure what can be built on the east side of town. But it's just a little disappointing that I haven't seen much change in thirty-some, in thirty-some years. There is a, used to be a park right there on east side. I'm not sure who it belongs to now. But there are some children on east side that would benefit if that still is an option to have a park there. But if you walk down on the asphalt, there's the trees and you actually have to bend over. And again, it seems like that's something that should be taken care of as well. And I don't know who looks at the grass growing on lots. But on 10th Street, there is grass that's about up to here. I don't know if that's a city thing or is that privately owned? But, you know, it's just the beautification of east side that I would like to see. And that's why I'm here today.
Thank you so much. And we have some good news for you potentially. And if those lots are privately owned, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe zoning is complaint-driven. So if there is a lot that is not well-cared-for, if you call, is it zoning they call?
Yeah, the property maintenance folks.
Yeah, if you call property maintenance and say the lot at such and the corner of whatever and whatever.
I can pass those along as well.
Yeah, they'll, they can, they can, they'll come and cut it. And I think what they do is bill the, whoever the absentee landlord is or whatever.
Let me, let me jump in, since I used to do that for a town in southwest Virginia. What they have to do is notify the lot owner and give them a certain number of days so it may not go away. And then the city can go in and cut the grass. And then they put a lien, a lien similar to a tax lien on the property.
Oh, okay.
That, you know, that's what they can do. And my experience in it, if the city or the town does it, the cost of cutting it's a whole lot more than if you had someone come in and do it privately.
Well, who owns the, the park? I don't know if it's called a park anymore on east side. Do you know what I'm talking about? It's right there, right before Basic City.
Bay City, yeah.
I am, I believe it's still privately owned. I'll need to look into that.
Yeah, 'cause.
I know Dwayne used to go out and take care of it, and then I think it changed hands.
So it's no longer the city?
It is the city's now?
Okay.
I'll look into it, yeah.
So it's, you know, it's, it's not going to be like a park anymore where the kids can go and, and play?
I'm not sure. I'll look into it.
Because there used to be some, I don't know, seesaws or something like that. It would just be nice if it was enclosed for safety reasons as well. And like I said, the trees are coming over on the side, on the asphalt sidewalk.
And in general, the east side lacks a, a good city park, just part of why the Sunset Park project was a big.
Yeah, and I just saw what it, biking hiking trails.
If we can get the park funded.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, you have that tunnel that's, you know, that's there and it's bringing a lot of people. It'd just be nice, and they know they want to come into, into Waynesboro. It'd be nice if there was something like, oh, wow, this is really nice coming into the city.
You're talking to the right planning commission. We have worked very hard to try to improve zoning in Basic City. We actually developed a new, it's been accepted by the council. We developed a new zone to make Basic City more friendly to both businesses and, and residents. So we've worked really hard, I feel like we've worked really hard.
Well, it is definitely a point of emphasis in the comprehensive plan, but I think we definitely need more people advocating for it.
Yes, and I would recommend that you talk to city council as well.
Oh, I should.
We love when people show up and decisions are made by the people who show up. So we are glad you're here tonight.
Okay, well, like I said, you know, and Basic City looks nice. I mean, they have a nice sidewalks and then bam, we're back to asphalt. So I'll be glad to.
Right, well, and we also have that.
Yeah, the VDOT funded, the Smart Scale project is scheduled for probably 2023. And so that'll add a lot of sidewalk along that corridor as well as.
We, yeah, the planning commissioners worked really hard to get a big grant to put some of that stuff in. And it'll probably start in 2023.
And we, we tried to get a grant to attach the trail coming down from the tunnel all the way, what, to Basic City Brewery? And we're still asking for that, so.
Yeah, that's not, not gone anywhere so far.
And, and any more specific concerns? All of our information is on the city website. And I'm sure that any of us would be happy to, if you have a specific concern, to, happy to help you direct it to where it could probably do the most good.
So Luke, on the website, is the comprehensive plan for beautifying the entrances to, including east side, is that on there?
Yes.
There has been a picture, you know, as a drawing of what is proposed.
That's not a detailed plan. That's just a, you know, it's emphasizing, saying for the city's overall strategy that that's important and should be a focus. And I, I don't feel like we have really pursued that in the budget yet as a city.
No, yeah.
But it's in there.
Yeah, so feel free to reach out to any of us and we will try to.
And your counselors.
Yes, and your city counselors. And we, like I said, I love when people show up. That's who I believe the decisions are made by, so keep showing up.
I will.
Thank you.
One other thing, there is a Parks and Recreation Committee and Department. And on that park, you probably need to be asking about that. If you don't get the right answer to it, talk to town council.
I can, I can pass those questions along as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So much for coming.
Welcome back to Waynesboro. Any other comments that are not on the agenda? Okay, so. We need to have a public hearing on a quest by Mark Holmes to rezone a one-point, I mean, a 0.171 acre parcel, tax map number 45-2-9B, located at 1017 New Hope Road from HB Highway Business District to LB Local Business District. So let me hear. So I think we can have a little presentation from the staff on this public hearing?
It might help you cut these lights. Yep, yes.
This application is for a rezoning of the parcel located at 1017 New Hope Road across from the neighborhood Walmart. It's located off of West Broad Street in the central part of the city and downtown region. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the parcel from HB Highway Business to LB Local Business. The property has a brick house, commonly known as the Little Red Brick House, that was built in 1866 and has since fallen into disrepair and is vacant. The applicant's intent is to restore the building back to its original condition for use as a single-family residence. The current zoning does not allow for use as a single-family residence, and the rezoning would allow this by right. The uses around the parcel include the neighborhood Walmart across the street on the west side, single-family homes along Ohio Street, and Willow Oak Parking Lot next to the roses there, and then the old Presbyterian Cemetery to the south and east. This request is considered a downzoning since the LB District allows for less intense uses than the HB Districts. HB Districts are generally more auto-oriented and intended for parcels fronting on major arterials and highways like Broad Street. The properties adjacent to this parcel are a mix of commercial and single-family residences, so the rezoning to the LB would have little impact on these surrounding properties. In addition, the rezoning would not preclude the possibility of a small-scale business or office locating here in the future. And there are no additional impacts on traffic anticipated because the rezoning would reduce the overall development possible on the parcel. The rezoning would create an LB parcel in the middle of a larger HB-zoned area, but the current zoning is inconsistent with the existing building stock and the other uses in the area. And it's also inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And then a block to the south between Broad and Main Street are a grouping of parcels zoned LB. The comprehensive land use plan designation of this parcel is medium-density residential. It sits in the middle of one of the largest neighborhoods whose zoning doesn't actually match the land use plan. Despite being zoned HB, the area is primarily made up of single-family residences and small commercial structures. While the parcels fronting on Broad Street are appropriately zoned HB, the land use plan's desired use for the other parcels in this area is medium-density residential. And the rezoning would make this a possible use for this parcel. Staff is recommending approval of this request. The rezoning is consistent with the long-term vision for the area and has been determined appropriate for this property. Long-term, the planning commission may want to consider rezoning the other parcels located in this area. The area between Broad Street and the railroad tracks is one of the largest areas in the city where the zoning doesn't match the current land use plan. The parcels currently facing Broad Street could remain HB, while the parcels farther back, farther away could be rezoned to RG5 or RMF with some transitional parcels zoned LB or MXB. And that's all I have for you and ready for any questions you might have.
As I pick on him all the time, why is this not spot zoning as the zone is now?
Per, per our attorneys, it's not spot zoning in this case because it's in line with our comprehensive plan.
Then why don't we just rezone all the residential area all along Ohio and I think all New Hope Road? I think it's residential, I drove it today.
It is all residential. I think that would be appropriate long-term. That said, we kind of burned through our advertising budget doing the MXB rezoning, so maybe that could be next year's project.
Well, this is the second, the second piece we're rezoning that I've raised that question about, and the area.
The area around.
Appropriate for rezoning.
I, I think it would be appropriate to pursue a couple additional planning commission-driven general rezonings in the future.
And then just do rather, hit it one time with an advertisement for about three different areas.
Right, are you talking about holding this up? I think.
No, I'm not talking about holding it up, but I'm, I'm.
I think we could consider, consider this a step in the right direction and then follow with.
That's, that makes sense to me.
Yeah. You're going to follow with the other continuous areas that you discussed, turning into a more sensible zoning.
Is this, is that building not considered a historical building here in our area? It was the first schoolhouse in Waynesboro, I believe.
It's, it's not actually designated on any of the historic registers. And I also believe the landowner is here, or applicant, excuse me, is here to answer any questions that may happen as well.
It's appropriate if the, any more questions for planning commission? Okay, if the applicant wants to approach the podium, just give your name and your address.
I am Mark Holmes and I actually live in Portland, Virginia, in Springfield. But I have numerous properties that are in Waynesboro. And it was about, I guess four years ago, I was actually here at the town council. And they always say, be careful what you wish for because you might just get it. I got tied up with the Red Brick House Committee and the house, there's actually a mistake on there. It's actually built in 1820 when it was finished. It was actually a Revolutionary War general who ended up building it. He's actually buried in Stanton, and his headstone is actually made out of bricks, so he has an affinity for red bricks. I, when I first saw the house, fell in love with it because it's our history, all of our history, good and bad. And knowing that it's been here for 200 years, my goal was to just try and save it. The problem has been for the course of the last four years with it being zoned highway, there's just not enough space in there to put in parking for without destroying the house. And turning it into a commercial space, I don't want to turn it into it. I want to make it to a place where there's so many people who have been tied to this house. The reason I got involved because all these people who used to live in this house would want to be able to come through and see it. And so turning it back into a single-family home, it's a place I can come down when I'm down here working and things like that. I can have my own little, you know, home office there as well. And it can be a place that people can see how it was originally done. I had started doing a little bit of the work on it, but unfortunately, because of the zoning and going through, it's just not cost prohibitive to do the highway parking and everything else. I looked at buying the lot next door to do that. But in essence, with the cemetery that's right there, you really don't want anything else in there. You really want to keep this pristine. You know, literally, when you think about this, there was only 23 states in the Union when this place was built. And it would be a travesty for it to be just falling to the ground. And I can answer any questions about it if you.
So your purpose would be to open it to the public and you.
It's funny because I've had people, I actually had a gentleman who was about 93 years old and said, I want to just come in here and live the rest of my life and die in this house. And so I come down here because I have other rental properties and stuff in here, so I come down a couple days a week. But, you know, if somebody wanted to stay here or, you know, and things like that, or see how it was originally done, I have a vision of it because it was originally a schoolhouse. And it's, as far as we can tell, the third oldest schoolhouse masonry in the country. There's a historic schoolhouse, I think was built in 1837. This one predates it. It's just never been registered. After that, the Civil War, the closing battle, of course, of Waynesboro came through the property. After that, it became the Lee Lodge, where Robert E. Lee gave his permission for the name to be used as the Lee Lodge. And then after that, the town's blacksmith actually lived there. So I envision taking some of the rooms and dedicating it all to each one of those periods as part of the history. So when somebody comes through, it's not technically a historic, you know, like the house that's over here. But, yeah, right, but you can at least get the feel of what it originally was.
So then people could visit.
People could, yes.
You're going to set it up where people can come and, and, I mean, appreciate the historical meaning of that. And, yeah, I think that's really important. It's a landmark in Waynesboro.
I, I've actually already gone through, because I'm a cabinetmaker, I do woodworking stuff. When I originally got it, you may have noticed that originally it had all of the windows were boarded up. I took the original sashes and reclaimed as much of the wood as I could to rebuild those original ones. The front door that I built was actually lumber that was up underneath the house and stuff. So I'm trying to restore it and want to restore it much like it originally was.
That's good, yeah.
Okay, any more questions?
The addition that's to the, I guess if you're looking at the front of the house, the left, what area is that? Because it doesn't match anything.
That doesn't match, as far as I can tell.
Are you going to take that down?
No, I'm actually going to keep that on there because that was put on right around the early 1900s.
Okay.
Okay, and again, what we'd end up doing is the original masonry walls, of course, you got to use lime mortar and stuff with it. I want to go back through and parts those walls like they were because part of the problem is, and one of the reasons why, they'd want to update it to be commercial. If you go through and frame up the walls, put insulation in there, basically, the walls have to breathe. Once they stop breathing, all those original timbers and stuff will literally rot out and it will fall to the ground.
Yep.
That was actually the original reason why you had the bricks that came out of the side of it. Somebody came through with regular masonry cement and bricks because they're hard and don't breathe. The house rejected it like a kidney. Just kicked it out. So you have to be careful when you're working on something that's this old. Now, the second part of that is actually where the kitchen, the dining room, and the bathroom and stuff in the house, we'd go through and fix that as well. But again, that's still part of the history. So when you look at the link of the chain of 1820 through, you know, here we are in 2021, it's still a link of the chain, it's still part of the history of it, so you wouldn't want to take that off.
You planning on doing any architectural digging on the grounds to find the original, maybe foundation for the blacksmith shop?
Well, you know, we've had.
Or do you know where, where it is?
It's, it's actually, it's funny because we've actually found a couple of pieces that were around that we have no idea. In fact, I had pictures sent to the Smithsonian to try and figure it out. But as we've been working underneath of it, we found old newspapers from the 50s after we took off some layers of floors and stuff. And when you see some of the cartoons and stuff, I mean, you talk about, ooh, they, they were really, really racist and things like that. Underneath the house, we found powder tins that were brass. The company went out of business in 1898. Inside one of the interior walls, we found, and we actually found the descendant to them, we found, it was like a mirror on one side and a picture on the other side. And we found out this is this lady's great-grandmother. So there's all kinds of stuff that we've been finding as we've done a little bit of work and stuff on there. Who knows what else will be there as we go through and try and save it?
Are those things that you'll display?
Oh, definitely, yes, definitely, yeah. We already have all those things and stuff in there.
That's interesting.
Are you working with any local historical archaeologist?
I don't know any actually offhand.
How about I give you a name?
Okay, I would love that.
Ben Ford, Ravana Architect in Shawesville.
Okay.
I work for the University of Virginia. He has done multiple excavations up there. He's the one that found the cistern that was on the east side of the rotunda when they renovated that.
Oh, okay.
And because of it, they redesigned the underground entry into the catering area for the rotunda. He's also done excavation work for me when I was a project manager. And we discovered some original serpentine wall foundations that nobody knew was there. So he would be a good one to consult with.
Definitely.
But, yeah, I think he's on the web. Ben Ford, Ravana Architect, archaeologist, archaeology. But, yeah, he'd be a good one for you to contact. So, yeah, I know a little something about preserving historic structures.
Yeah.
You can't go in there with regular cement from today and patch any of that stuff.
Yeah, it, it'll literally just destroy it. And that's where I really want to bring it back because it's actually amazing because the floor joists underneath of it are logs that are flattened out.
Are they heart pine?
The, well, the flooring itself is heart pine. The heart, it's about an inch and a quarter, and you can tell they're handso.
Yep.
And it's funny because you didn't know that because there were so many layers of flooring that were on top of it. Once we pulled it off, there are 13, 14-inch wide pieces of art, hot pine flooring that are on there that are just simply beautiful. There's actually four fireplaces in the original part of the house and two other chimneys on the back side. So it's, you know, to me, it's a treasure. And I look forward to actually doing things like this. I really enjoy doing things like this. I've done work with the Smithsonian where we worked on the Smithsonian Castle. Because of the earthquake, they ended up having one of their main beams that started literally falling off a ledge because they didn't worry about earthquakes back then. We had to go through, literally, dig into the wall to go ahead and put on supports for it. And thinking that this was built in 1854, you feel like you're a link in the chain of the history and stuff on it. And that's what I want to be with the Red Brick House.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your, your passion and enthusiasm is much appreciated. Again, we love when people show up to our meetings. And let's see. I think I can open the public hearing now. So, let's flip back to my page so I can read everything. So I'm going to open the public hearing on a request by Mark Holmes to rezone a 0.171 acre parcel, tax map number 45-2-9-B, located at 1017 New Hope Road from Highway Business District to Local Business District. Is there anyone who wants to speak? So I think I probably close the public hearing?
Can people call in?
We don't do the call-in for planning commission now, yeah.
Okay.
People can submit a written comment.
Okay.
Which we can read and.
Do you don't have any written comments on it?
I do not have any written comment on it.
Okay, so I think we can close the public hearing. And any questions among commissioners? I think this is a.
Slam dunk?
I think this is a slam dunk. I just don't see any reason why somebody who comes to town and wants to make things better in this manner and obviously has such passion should be denied that opportunity.
And I appreciate that you honoring that home and what it was and for keeping it that way. And I appreciate that you honoring that home and what it was and for keeping it that way. Thank you.
It is really exciting.
History is an amazing thing. Yep.
So. Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we recommend the town council rezone an oh point one seven two acre parcel tax map number forty-eight dash two dash nine capital B located at one oh one seven New Hope Road from HB Highway Business District to LB Local Business District.
So anyone that's second?
I'll second that motion.
Everyone in favor of said motion?
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion carries to recommend to city council with our wholehearted recommendation. The request by Mark Holmes to rezone a zero point one seven one acre parcel tax map number forty-five dash two dash nine B located at one zero one seven New Hope Road from Highway Business District to Local Business District. And it carries, and that's what we'll send to council. So that's, we're good with that one?
And I didn't mean to give you a heart attack. When I asked about spot zoning, there was a purpose. And I've been after them to zone larger parcels that meet the requirements.
Thank you very much. And then now we have a update on the Brownfields and Steering Committee volunteer selection?
Yes, and y'all are not obligated to stay for the whole meeting if you don't feel like it.
It's really exciting things happen there. You might want to miss them.
As mentioned, I believe I sent you all an email that the city received a Brownfields Assessment Grant from the EPA. It's possible that can be used to do environmental site assessments. As part of that, we have a steering committee. And I sent out a request, and I believe just about everyone volunteered. So I don't need everybody. If anyone is particularly eager, I think it would be great to have a couple of folks on, especially, because some of you I can have. You know, I really probably only need two planning commissioners, but some of you could represent other interests, like we probably need someone from the environmental science community. I was thinking maybe Lowry could do that. But, yeah, does anyone have, feel particularly strongly about?
I'll be glad.
I'm not doing anything, so I'd be glad to. But, you know, if we've got some folks that are maybe a little better qualified, I'd.
Do you know where the sites are within Waynesboro?
No, that's the purpose of, well, so in the grant application, we talked about three locations. One was the East Main Street corridor. One was the downtown area, and then one was sort of the broad and Main Street corridor. And the purpose of the committee would be to help do site selection. So almost certainly, the Metal Crafters Building would be one of them, because I think there's a pending sale going on there that as an assessment would help with. But the idea is, you know, this is one of those grants where the, what you can do is fairly limited, and it can either be useful or not. And generally, often isn't useful. So we really want to try to find sites where it will be useful, where it will help contribute to a sale. But for that purpose, I'd like to see input from a steering committee rather than us just picking them, so that's the idea. Well, I will.
You just want to pick somebody? Just pick some people out of volunteers?
Either that or we could put our names into a hat and you pick three out.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll get back to you all tomorrow and let you know then. I won't do it in front of anybody here. But I'll think about how, how many folks we need to have on the committee total, and it might be okay to have.
You must be doing something right to get so many volunteers, Luke.
You guys are so eager. It's great. It is, I do appreciate it because I think it's tough for a lot of citizens to just jump in on one thing. And get caught up in it. So it's nice to have the planning commissioner that's sort of aware of what's going on.
You know, it's funny, somebody asked me just two weeks ago about the Virginia Metal Crafters Building. As a, in my favor, it was a guy I worked with. He, he was a developer in Colorado. And was asking me about it, and I told him, you know, as far as I know, I didn't think there was any pending sales with it, but that a couple of people over the years have inquired about, you know, retail and then apartments and stuff like that. And I said, Basic City took over part of it.
Right. Yeah, there's not, I'm sorry, it's not a sale in Penny, it's a lease coming in potentially. But, yeah, the company that owns it is Matchbox Realty out of Harrisonburg, and they're a fairly professional operation and stuff. But they've had several plans over the years, just a matter of finding the right tenants or the money to renovate.
Well, they found the right one in Basic City.
They definitely did.
We will anxiously await to see who wins the treasured position.
Maybe I can get everybody on there. Let me think about it.
Are you gonna spin the wheel?
Ask, I've got to talk to my consultant tomorrow, and she does, works with a lot of these EPA Brownfields grants. And so she'll have a better idea of what, what they like to see.
Great, thank you, Luke. And we have an update on the CD BG entitlement projects?
Yes, so I'll be bringing you all, and again, sorry, I'm just not ready for primetime with this. We've been kind of slammed. But I'll bring you all next month, the draft list of CD BG projects to fund for the next year. But we'd like to try to get ahead of that a little bit more, and we have developed a little bit more of a CIP for it, sort of capital improvement plan based around that CD BG money.
Great.
But been, had some trouble this year. Tom Carlson was the longtime administrator of it, and it is a bear to administer. The HUD lets you allocate twenty percent of your costs to paying administrative costs. And our current contract is with the PDC to do that, and it takes all of that time. It's just very, very complicated. There's just a lot of paperwork for everything. It's frustrating how difficult it could be, but then you get to do projects you wouldn't get to do otherwise. So it's worth it, but, yeah. So we're having a little bit of growing pains transitioning from Tom, because he had done it for years and knew it so well.
Okay, great.
But, yeah, I'll bring you all projects next month that we should be going before council. If the chair doesn't mind, I was gonna also just quickly show a few. We've, we've had a real deluge of minor subdivision applications.
Yeah, you said you referred to that in your email, that there might be some things we would love to.
And rezonings, and I was just gonna just quickly introduce you to a couple of applications that might be here next month.
Have a little heads up.
Get input on, yes.
Thank you so much.
We just so love your presentations, Luke.
This is not a good one.
Well, everybody has to start somewhere. I mean, Rome was built in a day.
Hey, we're all still coming out of this craziest year of ever. I give everybody one.
And thank you, by the way, to Alessand for first presentation to.
Very good.
And I did notice that he set you up for my question.
So we have at the moment four applications pending for the next, four public hearings pending for the next planning commission meeting. So I just wanted to give you all some heads up on, on what they are. One of them is a rezoning of this corner parcel at Thirteenth and Linden, which currently holds a small, single-family home right up against the cemetery. The other three corners of the intersection are an apartment building, office building, multifamily building there. And the applicant would like to tear down the existing house, which is quite small, and build a corner lot duplex. But to do that, they would have to rezone. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's not totally clear what zone to rezone to. RMX might make sense since it's contiguous. Really, RG five is, is better. There's no RG five in the area, but it is sort of a transitional, it's in between RMX and RS seven, so it might be fine as a step down. But that's something I thought I would get you all's opinion on or throw that out there.
So you gonna, you gonna have your notes so that when Stephen, Stephen asks you.
Well, I'm gonna ask Steve what he thinks up front.
So you're doing some more spot zoning?
That's the idea, a little more spot zoning.
Is it one where we could come back later and change the zoning in that area?
We could def, I mean, this, I don't think that there's an obvious, I think where we were talking about today, there's an obvious rezoning to be done. You don't really need to have a big conversation about, this one is probably more of a, there would need to be a public meeting, and there would need to be some discussion. But it is a little bit of a jumble in there. And not, and I think you're likely to have a lot more competing interests here. I think with MXB, people were more on board with where we were going with it. But, yeah, so that, I'll be bringing you that application, either RMX, just to keep it consistent, or RG five to be transitional. That's that. And that's what that corner looks like. There's the apartment on one side, and this is the.
Oh, that, that corner, okay. I had, the map was, I was trying to figure which way the map was going.
I just, at the last minute, pulled these Google street view images just so you could know what you're looking at.
And that particular house has a lot of challenges. I'd love to see it bulldozed and rebuilt. You can see my house from there.
The next application is on Reservoir Street and on the east side.
Please tell me it's the, it's the house that's about to fall down, that the people keep knocking the door in?
It is that one. It is the red brick house there owned by Jake Turner, yeah, on, on Reservoir Street, right across from Fairfax Hall. They own about an acre of land right here. The applicant, yeah, you can kind of see the picture over here. It is a very old house, but it's not, also not on a historic register, and it is in pretty bad shape. The applicant, in this case, I am hesitant, I, in fact, I will probably recommend denial. But the applicant would like to rezone to RMF. I'm on the fence about it. So currently, they, they could tear down the house under the current zoning and construct eight townhomes fronting on Reservoir Street as the zoning sits currently. He would like, and that's just by right, he would like to rezone the property to RMF, which wouldn't be spot zoning, as RMF is across the street. But most of the parcels around here are RG five, and would like to rezone it to RMF so they can get sixteen units on there. And would need to do two rows of apartments there. And I guess, given what else is on the street, and also the street itself is not quite, it's not a, it's a, it's a sub, subpar city street as well. I'm, I've warned him that I'm inclined to recommend denial.
Now, ha, now if he puts even eight duplex on it, has he gonna address the neighbor down below him where the elevation difference is about five feet?
Yeah.
I mean.
He could do that by right, so he wouldn't really need to do anything. Now, if you did want to, if you all did want to approve his rezoning, one thing that, just to prep you all, you know, you can ask for, you can you can't bargain for things. You, things have to be proffered voluntarily by the applicant. But you can say that, you know, we have concerns about what it will look like and so forth, and he can, he can come back with drawings and try to, you know, commit to certain things, but.
It'd be a shame to tear that house down. What it needs is another gentleman like Mr. Home to come in and buy that house, because I think that house is currently, what, eight, ten apartments?
I believe it was most recently split into a couple of apartments. Until recent, and then it fell vacant a few years back. When he took ownership of it, yeah.
Yeah, because there's a little utility building over at the end that's about eight by twelve. He was renting out till fall.
Yeah, I thi, I think it's just gotten to a state where it would be cheaper for the applicant to tear down and build, build new.
Be a shame to lose that historic, that building.
More of a shame in the conditions.
Well.
It is, it is quite old, though, yeah.
Well, when you leave your windows open and the doors open, and you let it rain in there, and you kind of self-destruct it yourself, you know.
But again, it's, it's not currently, like the red brick house, it's not currently designated a historic structure, so we, unfortunately, we can't. We can't control what he does with it.
Yeah, because it doesn't date back to Fairfax Hall.
So that's coming your way, so think, tool on that. Another rezoning is these four parcels right here on Fairfax Avenue that are currently zoned light industrial. They're owned by Vector Industries, which used to be up here. There's sort of a small industrial area up here. It used to be Vector, which hires people with disabilities, and that property's being sold. But these four lots are vacant. And they'd like to rezone them to RG five residential, same as all these parcels around. And it's these lots right here. And again, that one's a little bit, makes a little bit more sense. It's the same as, you know, the parcels around.
Is that across from the city shops?
That is indeed, yeah.
Okay, I thought, I thought it looked familiar.
Yeah, it was in city shops. So that's also coming your way. Think about that one. And then there's also potentially a certificate of appropriateness. This is owned by, this building's owned by the Wayne Theater. It's just up street from the theater. There's, the mural is on this portion of the building right here. They, the back part of the building is in really bad shape. The front part's in pretty bad shape as well. They, what they want to do is, is restore the front part where the mural is and that fronts on the street. And then tear down all of the rear section that's in really bad shape. And so that certificate of appropriateness will also be coming to you next month, potentially.
Who's leading that project?
The Wayne Theater. Yeah, the Wayne Theater's the applicant.
Are they thinking if they tear it down to make more parking?
They have a long-term plan for the whole block that this somehow contributes to. I, I don't know that they have an immediate plan. I'll have to make sure that we have all those questions answered. I know in the front section, they would like to renovate the front section of the building for office space for the theater.
What are your thoughts on tearing that down?
I was hesitant to recommend allowing the front part torn down, just because it's this part of the street wall, and it's a nicer, you know, building. The back section, I really feel like has to go. It's, I'll, we'll get you pictures of it next, next month.
My thought was that I like buildings staying on the sidewalk at the back of it.
Yeah, that was why I was glad that they came back with that idea.
What has been in there?
I am not sure what the last use was.
Before, before Wayne?
Right, no, there was a business. I can't remember the, it's on, I think it's still on the window.
Yeah, I can't remember either. I drive by, drive by multiple times a week and.
But I'll try to get that information for you as well.
Now, do they own the house on the corner where the sewing shop used to be?
Yes, they own several properties in that block. They don't own the church. I think they own the house, just, they own the house just above it. And they own the house just below it.
Okay.
Do they own the, own this region?
No, they don't, yeah. No, that's a private owner. Not sure what he's.
He's got lots of plans and no money.
Well, it was a lumber store, it was in there where the printing press was at one time, so.
That's, those are all the applications that we have for next month, but I just wanted to give you all a heads up so you can.
Thank you.
Sounds like we're having a busy time.
Yeah.
Busy time, yeah.
That's good.
If we have relationships with these people, does that need to be disclosed? Like Tracy and our, at the Wayne, Tracy at the Wayne and our.
Oh, I think that would be, yeah. With the Wayne Theater, it's, you know, it's a large organization, so I think that's probably less. But definitely, any of the private landowners, I would say you should disclose that and recuse yourself.
When would be the right time to do that?
Just during the vote.
Okay.
Actually, you don't, you're not even required to recuse yourself unless you have some kind of, like, direct familial relation or financial interest in the property. But you can always choose to recuse yourself if you feel like you can't be impartial.
Oh, no, that's not a problem. I just wanted to know what the rules are.
No, it's, but for the Wayne Theater, I mean, that's a, a large, that's a nonprofit group.
You saw The Lion King. I made the sun that came up in The Lion King.
Before we all go, I wanted to acknowledge really quickly, Miss Jeanne McCutcheon in the back. No, she's not listening to me right now. Miss Jeanne McCutcheon back there is a longtime planning commissioner. So just wanted to.
Thank you.
Give her a shout out for giving us a visit again.
Well, Cheryl is interested in, she's asked me a lot of questions. I thought this is a good stuff, you know.
Exactly.
Yeah, you can learn a lot about what's going on here.
We're all really nice, too.
And much less formal, I guess.
The city council's the one who has the money to do the things you want to see done, and to tell the Parks and Rec people, get that park back in shape.
Yeah, I remember that park. It had the little, the ducks that were on the springs, and then just all of a sudden, overspanned about two weeks, they were gone. It was filled in with grass, and I thought, well, maybe they putting new ones in there. Nope, threw down some sod and went on about the business.
On, on your sidewalks, too. I think the city now has a sidewalk crew.
Yeah, they're working up on Delphine.
They do, they are doing maintenance and replacement. They're not up, we don't, we're not really capable of building new sidewalk yet, but they're.
Because I'll tell you, I was the attorney for a town in southwest Virginia. And about twenty-five years ago, they committed to a sidewalk crew. And in the next twenty years, it really did change the whole walking system in the town. It takes a while, but it's also a lot cheaper than having to contract it out to someone else, once you get a dedicated crew going. else, once you get a dedicated crew going. And they've just gotten that true crew back in the last four or five years, haven't they?
Just in the last two years, really.
Two years.
Yeah, and they did, they just did the, they did the repair work on Port Republic, and they've done some repair... Yes, that, which was a long time coming.
Yeah, they repaired the sidewalk on Arch right there in, uh, front of Ming, and their parking lot.
They're, they're still building up their skills, but I think they've gotten to a point where they can repair just about everything.
And they're up on Delphine now, up next to the church, if I, in Open Park Way, doing some repair work.
Yeah.
Great.
Ready?
I think we're, we're good. Anybody ready to make a motion, adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Do you have commissioners?
Oh, do we have any commissioners' comments? Sorry, I didn't mean to...
I did wanna raise something, and we may have talked about this, and I just wasn't paying attention, but when reading the minutes, you had that portion in the Claybrook subdivision, where they waited until a lot of the, I guess, most of the lots were sold, before they put up the signs of no parking on one street?
Yeah.
And I'll tell you what, I thought about that, and the next time we say, yes, you can do the side, but you have to do, you can have to do no one, no parking on one side, we need to put in a provision that we do not, that no certificates of occupancy can be granted until the signage is up.
And we've worked out something like that with the next subdivision up. We're gonna make sure that doesn't happen again, I think.
And I, I think it looks terrible. And it is, I would be really upset if I was a homeowner and had that, all those signs in my front yard. I don't know what you can do to make that better, but...
Well, we could require them to make, to make larger, larger-sized roads.
Well, yeah, that's, that's...
They're, they're gonna go for exactly the smallest one, 'cause that's the cheapest and the most profit for them.
Yeah.
But where you and I live, they've got the big wide roads. Of course, they have no sidewalks, but they do have the wide road.
Even if, I don't understand that, but in hindsight, you can do that. But now you've got lovely homes with these signs stuck in every front yard. And you look down there, and all you see is the signs, and as a homeowner, homeowner, I would, I would not be happy about that. I feel for them. I, I really feel for them. I wish there was some way to do no, no parking on that sign, side, without having those signs stuck in everybody's yard. It's an eyesore, and I think it takes away from the...
Well, you could put, they could paint lines in the street.
They could do so.
And say no parking.
Well, but that's gonna be, the city's gonna end up doing that. The, the developer's out of it at this time.
Yeah.
Definitely something to...
Definitely doesn't look bad.
Doesn't all this sound like fun?
We had some discussions about painting a curb red.
It might be something we say something to the city.
Yeah. If you haven't been up there, you should go.
Yeah.
And then you'll know, like, I mean, maybe you'll feel differently than I do, but, um, I would be really upset, and I'm not sure some of the neighbors aren't complaining about it, but...
Oh, they are?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's really sorry.
Any other comments?
The only other comment that, that I have, and I was, I was thinking about this the other night, as I drove by Basic City, and I realize Christmas time is about six months